There any public comment on the agenda items? Seeing none. The minutes for the appropriate meeting were distributed. Is there any corrections to the minutes?
I have none.
I have none. I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Uh, the bill list?
Okay, on the bill list, a couple of comments. This is five weeks, you know, from our last meeting to this meeting. So it made some of the dollar amounts look high. Although like that insurance company, that's not a double one. But um, the IRS is doubled and... I don't know. Yeah, the IRS, the Department of Revenue.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, they looked a little high because it was five weeks in there in step four.
Any questions on the bill list? Not having a motion, we accept the bill list as presented. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries.
Pat, my dear, do you ever do comparisons from one month to another? From year to year? Like what was the expenses in March of last year or February of last year?
The whole year.
Yeah. No, the month. Like if you looked at last year's month of February and compared it to this year's month.
I didn't do that.
Oh, no.
Well, I always, when I examined the report, I always did it because that told me if my expenses were going up or they were anything. You follow what I'm saying?
Well, we always give the...
I'm just saying.
Yeah, we always give the total.
I'm thinking your expenses are going to be higher because of everything being so expensive. That's my opinion, you know? That, that's my only thought.
Higher and smaller.
It could be smaller in some areas too. We'd like it to go smaller, wouldn't we?
Uh, financial report, Pat.
Okay. The financial report. In the receipts, we had general fund receipts. We had $67,936.66. And the expenditures, the actual expenditures were $59,273.66. You'll see a CD interest adjustment there because uh, our interest does not accrue until the end of the CD. So what we were seeing as interest was really whenever it comes to the maturity of the CD. So it's not really there, so we had to adjust by this $10,914.48. And then as each of the three CDs mature, that money will be, well, even more than that because it, you know, as it accrues. But that's why that's there. And um, so the total in the general fund there is $777,722.9. In the ARP, the interest earned was $17.57. Expenditures, $4,080. And that lets a total in the ARP fund of $222,885.75. In the state fund, we got our liquid fuels, the dispersment, and that was $170,708.64. And the expenditures in that account were $1,800. So that lets a balance in the state fund of $174,199.98. And of that, $34,141.73 is an equipment balance. That's for, to buy trucks or whatever you need to work on the road. So the total of all the accounts as of January 31st was $1,012,212.42. The total in all the accounts as of today is $1,174,807.82. And is it okay with you guys if I revert back to meeting dates?
Yeah.
The statement thing didn't work because if we do it by the statement, then when we tell the checks that were written for that meeting, everything is off. Or else you have to make two billers. So it's easier to go back to...
Whatever's easiest for you.
Right.
What we were doing, well, I thought that was gonna be easier, but they're more...
All right. Uh, so you did discuss the liquid fuels distribution?
Yes.
So...
And under emergency area miscellaneous items, today we got a, an email from the county saying that there's gonna be training on March 18th for EMC. So I don't know if anybody is going to that or not, but it's Monday at 6 o'clock.
Okay, great messages, report.
No, we didn't have winter maintenance performed. Uh, we serviced and put new blades on the mowers. Our mower tractors are ready to go. And uh, we started culvert replacement. Did one today up on Toraway Road. And uh, just wanna thank Pleasantaker Farms. Last night we had, we got one of the trucks up and, excuse me, and they come and pull these out. So I wanna thank Pleasantaker Farms for donating their tractors to pull them in.
Thank you, Chuck. Supervisors' report.
Um, there was one comment, it was a complaint about some sofas or, or actually a couple of tires dumped from one of the native farm, a Mr., excuse me. Um, and I talked to the gentleman that owns it. Um, they are bringing a dumpster. They're gonna put those items as well as numerous other items, fill this dumpster up and remove it all. So it will be taken care of shortly.
Thank you. Bye.
Somebody just dumped stuff on another property?
It happens.
A sofa?
It was on the property of Lester Martin. I'm not absolutely sure it was dumped, but it is going to be removed and brought away in a dump. That along with other items, some stuff there that he's getting rid of. So he'll fill the dumpster up and take it, or it'll be taken somewhere.
And I have nothing to add. So we'll move on to the zoning officers' report.
All right. Let me get that up. It was a fairly busy month. We stopped, goes back to the last number I put in. Since the last meeting, I issued a building permit to Mike Proctor, 511 Mudrun Road, for 24 rooftop solar panels. Uh, Virginia Barth at 5522 Old Harrisburg Road, 58 roof-mounted solar panels. Lee Cronister at 334, yeah, 334 South Ridge Road. I drilled a new well that property never had a well, and it's crowded. JVI Group got a permit. This is for uh, to convert retail space to office use. They're putting in uh, cubicles for their office. And down in the basement of the structure, they're putting in a shop where a mechanic could work on their vehicles. And they're also, well, I'll do that in the rest of the report. Also issued a building permit to Mark Webb, 855 Myers Town Road, 14 rooftop panels. And Earl Hostetter got a waiver for doing a shower conversion in the house. And they issued a waiver to Vince Lobos who bought the Geis Farm over on Cranberry Road. He's updating uh, the, the one house. Uh, he's updating the kitchen, the bath, and new drywall and floors. And I issued a building permit to Greg Riley, 75 Roundoff Church Road, for 20 rooftop solar panels. That was all the permits. Uh, we got three subdivisions working. Uh, the Heebner one, they're not represented here tonight because the plan is still with the planning commission. Also then have a subdivision started for the Vince Lobos Farm up there on Cranberry Road. I guess they're gonna subdivide the two houses that are on that property, one for the daughter and another, well, one for each daughter, I guess. But they got three daughters, so I don't know which one. Two for the third.
There's three houses.
Three of them, yes. And uh, I also, we accepted a subdivision for a fellow by the name of Harley. I haven't met the man yet. He's uh, bought the lot from Baird Hershey over there that he was selling, the 18 acres. After Baird sold it, his wife realized that she's also, he also sold her tennis courts. And so now they had to redo it. So it's a reverse subdivision and an added lot. So uh, those two will be coming down the pike. And I need to talk to you about that Lobos subdivision.
Okay.
After the meeting. That's basically it. I reviewed the, oh, all right. Later on in the agenda, we're making, uh, I'm giving a report that the planning commission recommended that we adopt a new inspection agency that Wilbur's leaving. I reviewed the fee schedule that's posted on the wall that is a part of the code book. And uh, so we need to update that. And we might have to change a couple of the items. I told you about this subdivision. Planning Commission is still working with the county to revise the salvo. You guys are gonna, I guess, gonna have a, an executive session to consider the deal of the Millers to Commonwealth Court. And uh, I have from JVI, I've been talking to them because I still don't have a land development plan, but they are working on it, they say, but I told them you better hurry it up. I got a email from uh, JVI, from their engineer, that they're starting a traffic study. It's not a traffic, I guess it's called a traffic impact study, right? For the office because it is on a state road. And uh, they're changing the nature. One driveway going in will be for office personnel and the employees, and the other one will be for trucks going in and out. I didn't know they'd have to do it, uh, traffic impact study. All right. And uh, the planning commission's recommending what we had at the time as a burn ban ordinance, which has been renamed. So, but that's coming up on the agenda also, to you gentlemen. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Listeners' report?
I don't have anything to talk about other than what's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Scott, engineers' report.
Uh, Greenbrier Road Culvert Project is progressing. The permit was resubmitted today, permit application. Uh, nothing new for Myers Town Road. The Toraway Road Culvert, uh, permit application was submitted today. The last thing I need is a signature from Dave. And we're working on the update to the subdivision land development ordinance. I received a email from Andrew at the county planning earlier this week, so we're going back and forth, working on the next section.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, are you done? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The last thing is, is that we received a plan this week from, uh, for the Richard Harley subdivision plan review. So, and that's, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I had a question for, um, I noticed on the bill, I received a copy of the bill from Mr. Longstrath's firm. The updated grant application per the conservation district, is that the grant application for... Okay, I know this is, it's about $100,000. I forget what it's called. Is that what, you updated?
Which, what number is it? Can I see it?
Yeah.
Is it the motor logging dirt road?
Yeah.
No, this one's for Greenbrier. It's, yeah, it says regarding Greenbrier, the Greenbrier Road project.
Yeah, and it says a grant.
Yeah, the grant application, right.
So there's a separate one for Greenbrier, or is this...
Yes, this is the, this was the first one we've been talking about for a year.
The $100,000 one?
Right.
I know it's, oh, okay.
Approximately.
Oh, all right. I was unsure because we haven't had any, I was wondering which employee in the township was assigned to that. And then when I got this through the right to know, I noticed that Mr. Longstrath apparently has been working on the application.
He's the engineer, he's the one that...
Yeah. No, I realized that, but...
With Dan Mossman at the conservation issue.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, okay. Is there a deadline for the submittal for that?
Uh, yeah, it was the beginning of the month.
So we submitted, we, you submitted that? Okay.
Yep.
All righty.
That's, she wanted some last minute changes, so that's what I did.
Okay, thank you. Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Lear from the Oak Springs Rock Company would like to talk to us right now.
Yes. Adams County, the dispatch center is requesting box card changes. We, as officers and chiefs of the fire company, do not agree with it. They wanna remove tankers from the box cards for structure fires and some other changes that they don't want on them. They wanna standardize across the county, but what works in one area doesn't work in all areas. And we're not in favor of it. You guys as the municipality are responsible for the fire protection. So if you agree that we don't need to change it, we don't want to really, the way they are. I mean, I know you guys don't really understand the box cards totally. It's, I mean, it's, the township, I wanna say, has broke into probably about five boxes, maybe.
You're talking about just Huntington?
Yes. I mean, there's, you're gonna have a little bit of overlapping areas with Loudon Moore.
Well, can I explain to us...
A box is...
What the changes mean...
And how much?
What the changes mean to you guys? Because we don't fully understand.
Well, when I joined the fire company at 14, when they dispatch a structure fire and we go a second alarm or whatever, there's tankers coming. They don't want that on there, they want us to special request it. Well, for 20 some years, when I say I want another alarm, we're getting tankers. So we have a fire and we're trying to deal with stuff and know what's going on and be calling stuff, we're gonna probably forget to call or request tankers if they're not on the box card. I don't know what their reason is for wanting them off, but...
Who determined that, the commissioner?
No, it's, it was done through the chief's association at the county. They appointed a committee and came up with this, but...
As far as I'm concerned, in a rural area, we don't have available water. And you better have tankers.
I mean, some of the times, York Water, down in New Oxford, coming up 94 to Hampton, they've got amazing water. That pressure on York Water is amazing. And they've got pump houses everywhere to boost it. So I get that they could have a fire and they want more manpower and they call a second alarm. Well, if I call a second alarm, I'd probably need manpower, water, and everything coming. I mean, these back rural roads and stuff, we don't...
Better to have it than to not?
Well, I, absolutely. I'd rather have extra stuff coming and have to put stuff in service than not have it. I mean, and depending, everybody's struggling for manpower nowadays, it's...
Well, by, by not changing it, does it deplete your manpower at all? Not really?
No, it don't. Like I said, I don't know what their total reasons were for doing it. I mean, other than they said, other than they said we wanna standardize the box cards across the county, which, like I said, what works in Gettysburg Borough or New Oxford or wherever, doesn't necessarily work here where we have no hydrants. And York Springs Borough will tell you their hydrant system isn't gonna support us on a major structure fire even in the borough. If we go working fire in the borough, I got, we got tankers coming. Because even their hydrants aren't gonna support us, and they'll tell us that. We, I mean, we know it. If we could run one or two hand lines off a hydrant, we're gonna be lucky.
So is this the semantics?
I don't know. Half of it...
Is this a cost, an extra cost for you?
No, it don't.
Doesn't cost anymore?
No.
It only takes one more person than to bring a tanker up, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, it don't require two people, obviously.
Nope.
I make a motion that we don't accept the changes in the box cards.
Paul, real quick though, they've accepted the changes through other fire departments?
I know other departments have changed.
Is that gonna conflict? Because didn't they also redistrict and renumber some areas?
Uh, the only thing, I think there was changes made to Route 15.
Yes, you can and it's been done.
Which, that, a lot of our Route 15 stuff is already flagged. We had a lot of those changes that they went after were already done. Because it's limited access, if we go south on 15, Hylersburg's automatically coming because they can come north, that way if one of us can't get there, somebody should be able to get there. And it's like going towards Dillsburg, the rescue coming out of Hampton Station was actually the next closest in that area, but we still are running a rig from York County, just so it's coming the opposite way because of access. So I mean, we already had, every mile marker and intersection on 15 for us is flat, they have it flagged with those changes are, were done previously.
I just didn't want there to be confusion if we had some box cards in Hylersburg.
I wanna, I think Hylersburg actually created a different box for 15, which, if they really want us to, I mean, we can, but...
Now, if you refuse, if we refuse these changes, um...
I mean, it's essentially per department.
It doesn't complicate things for you guys, does it?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, we just redid our box cards two or three years ago when we were here.
I remember.
Okay.
Well, I think more water is necessary in the watering area.
I mean, they want, they want us calling trucks on every alarm. We have one on second alarm, but third and fourth and working fire, we do not. Well, if you get too many, all there gonna be is parked out in the road somewhere because they're not getting to the scene anyways once too much apparatus gets there and starts blocking. So I'd rather have tankers than have multiple trucks sitting on a scene that we can't even use.
You made a motion.
Okay. Yeah, I will continue to make the motion that we do not accept the county's changes in box cards.
I mean, just to keep them the same as they are's. For ours is what we're after.
Keep York Springs the same as it is.
As it has been. I'm supporting that motion.
And there is a paper there then? If you, do you wanna send it or you want me to take it, or?
We need to sign it, don't we?
You just need a sign that they were reviewed and there's no change, I mean, there's no changes made, it's just a reviewed...
Okay.
Thing. I mean, if you wanna fax it or...
I can just make a copy of it, you can take the original, this'll be ours.
Well, if you wanna fax it into county, I don't know if you email or fax with county...
They don't know the facts anymore, the mouse ain't the wire.
Oh, my. No, I mean, I can send it in to county or fax it in, or...
We do scan it, scan it and mail it to you.
I mean, if you wanna scan it, email it to Tammy Kumpel or whoever, I'm assuming that's your warrant.
Send it to Tammy and you?
That's fine, if you want to, yeah.
We have a question. I have a question. Is everything done? What is your, what is York Springs ISO rating?
Off the top of my head, I don't even know what it is.
Oh, okay. I'll call in then. Because I was told by their office that the chief would know. But you're not in your office, so yeah.
It's something I'd have to look up to be able to tell you that.
Is the ISO survey done yearly?
No.
It's over 10 years.
I'm gonna say it's, yeah, it's not, not every year, I know that.
Oh, really? Okay.
All right, anything else, sir?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you guys have any questions, we're actually setting up for a fundraiser. I am going to go, if that's okay.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Next is the Nurema report. Uh, the March meeting was canceled because of lack of information, so they rescheduled for April. So we are still discussing the truck.
Yes.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll let you know.
Old business, uh, anything on Greenbrier? Scott?
Just the way progressing.
Okay.
Uh, Myers Town, nothing. Thank you. Position is not filled at the original station. Gus, do you have a zoning...
I don't.
...alternate? So we can take that off and operate the way we have been?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They don't get a lot of action anyway, right?
No, hopefully not.
And uh, we have a representative to YATB and a person that will take care of it if we don't have anybody there, so we do not need a alternate representative there. And ORC COG, we, this is the first year we've had a representative to COG in a long time, so... All right, the next is the inspection agency. Do you wanna explain that, Gus?
Certainly. Wilbur, as you probably remember, is retiring, the agency's closing up. And there are two agencies that cover our area. One of them is Pennsylvania Inspection Code Agency in Chambersburg. We interviewed with them. And we also interviewed the metal department out of Camp Hill. And the metal department, after the interview, we decided that they were closest to their service level and their billing level as Wilbur was. And so we voted to recommend the metal department to the planning commission, and they in turn... and they in turn voted to recommend that you select the middle department to become our inspection agency. The, their inspector lives on the territory of Adams County, and he lives in Redding Township. He spent a number of years working for Wilbur, so he's familiar with the way we work and the way they work. And so, I think they'd be the most compatible, and that's who the planning commission recommends to you.
Um, I, when I was sitting on the, um...
That's great, you were there.
Yeah, and I think middle department was the best choice as well. So, I'll make a motion that we sort middle department inspection services.
I will second that. It's been approved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is to present our PSAT calendars to the ladies who took the pictures. So, Roxy, will you come forward?
Send your name, tell them. Want to just go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, you should take a picture of this for the website or whatever.
And this one is for Cindy Sowers, she was not here, so, Pat, let's make sure that she gets it. Okay, that's good.
Thank you, guys.
How many of the pictures you guys took are in it, two?
Two are in here, and I...
Of, of your guys' pictures?
Yes, yes.
I think you should be...
Glad you asked, I think that's pretty...
Yeah, I think we, I think I, uh, sent in like maybe five.
Okay.
I don't remember, but, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
The, how on your ASA addition progress? Pat, do you want to explain that one?
Okay, well, you know, we have that time tape we have to work with, and, um, the fifteen-day comment period was over on the twenty-first of February. So, after that comment period was over, then we had to send the, the letter to our planning commission and to Adams County, telling them, you know, that, that they want to, to add to our ASA. And we got the letter back from our planning commission, they, we should have the copy of it there, um, that they're in favor of it, and we are still waiting for the county. Then, after we get those, we have to have our ASA board review it, and then they will make their recommendations to supervisors. Well, hopefully, um, we can get that for the April meeting, you know, that we'll have their, the county's comments back in time to advertise to have this meeting, the board at our supervisor's meeting, like we normally do, you know, before we're doing, and, and then they, you know, you guys can, the supervisors, make their recommendations. But that's where we are, we got one letter back and waiting on the other one.
By the way, the planning commission voted to recommend that, that movement.
Next is the salt contract.
Okay, um, the roadmaster and you supervisor talked about requesting a hundred tons, and we sent it to Co-Stars, and we got the, the approval that they will keep us a hundred tons, so we have to, uh, you have to get at least sixty percent of it, and can't go over maybe ten percent, I think it is. But at any rate, uh, we've been, yeah, a hundred and forty, you can, yes, you can get up to a hundred and forty percent of the total tonnage. So, we're good for a hundred tons at least this coming season.
But we have to take fifty, for sure.
All right. Uh, the fee schedule, Gus, is that in, is that complete, or do we just, are you just want us to acknowledge it and vote on it next month?
I think you gotta vote on it now because it has to go into the code company to be put in the book, but he, before the end of the month, as I remember.
I don't think that's complete.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Well, I think when, if we discuss it tonight, it can be as complete as it's gonna be. Uh, I got, I just want to go down. The first item, if you've got one in front of you, is, uh, attorney's fees, and on this one, it says a hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour, and after consulting with Todd, he says that his rate is one fifty-nine per hour, and we can't make money on legal fees. He's the only one. So, he wants to lower it to one fifty-nine. Uh, then, we have another category called review of subdivision and land development plans. Now, since I've been here, the only one that we've ever had to have, uh, legal help with was Mr. Moma in the trailer park. And minor plan is up to ten lots, actually legally, I think it's five, and major plans are over five. Here it says ten. And there's a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars for minor plans and a hundred and seventy-five dollars per major plans. Um, I just don't see how you can have a floating scale there, even though it makes sense. It makes sense that there's gonna be higher legal fees for a major plan with more lots, uh, if there does come to legal consultation. So, I would just take off both of those categories and go with the hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which is what we charge. And because of minor plans, I don't ever remember, uh, where we had legal for that.
So, we're gonna delete that whole subsection?
Yeah, just have the solicitor bill at his rate.
Yeah, because generally, your ordinance is say that you can collect fees related to attorney's fees, and then normally your fee, and it says, normally it'll say subject or to the fee schedule, but then you put your fees in here and not in the ordinance, so you don't have to constantly amend the ordinance because you have to advertise ordinances, so you put it in the fee schedule. Basically, anything that says that attorney's fees can be imposed upon anybody, then obviously it'll just be at the actual rate, the attorney fees are charged.
Okay, okay.
Okay? So, then the next item here is the, uh, under building permit fees, fee for building, and it says state fee, and that's four dollars. The state raised it to four fifty. And so, we have to go with that, that's what we've been paying for the last two years. The cone enforcement, the fifteen-dollar administrative fee, uh, I think that stands up with what I've seen from other townships. The inspection will be fee, will be the rate that the, uh, agency has, and the uniform construction code occupancy fee. When I did it, I charged twenty-five dollars, but now that we have an agency doing it, uh, it should be raised eighty-five dollars to reflect their costs.
Well, will they just bill them, or will that be through us?
Um, that's to be determined. Either way, I have it on my fee schedule because I charge it.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Because I didn't know if that would be on there, you know, just...
No, that's, I was the building code official, I gave that up, so, um, that's why it's eighty-five dollars. Uh, the next item is, uh, copies. First five pages at this time are no charge. I'm saying that nobody has that on their schedule, and then we should do away with it.
You have twenty-five cents per page regardless, right?
Uh, well, we have, after the fifth page, we charge fifteen cents per page. The standard that everybody's charging is twenty-five cents, so what I'm saying is that we raise ours to twenty-five cents per page. Toner is quite expensive.
Well, now, I got a question about that. You say the first, the first five says no charge, so you want to take that off, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not allowed to take cash, so we can send somebody a bill for a dollar or a dollar and fifty cents?
I think it's stupid not to take cash, but that's your, somebody else's decision. I mean, it sounds like someone's gonna give you a thousand dollars for making copies.
Don't you have a petty cash account?
We do have petty cash, yes. But we use that petty cash, like when you need to run into Layman's and get a paintbrush or something. So, we, we use that for expenses as opposed to income.
Now, the next thing, Pat, you want to say something about that?
What?
About, uh, twenty-five cents a page?
I did say it.
Yep. Okay. Twenty-five cents a page from all pa, for all pages. Okay, thank you.
All right, the other thing says copying of zoning books, copy of SALDO. Um, if someone wants a zoning book or a SAL, a copy of subdivision and land development ordinance, uh, we charge whatever we, the code company charges us for the books. If somebody wants a, a copy, I email them a, uh, a copy, and they can print it themselves, so there's no cost to us. Uh, I think, so I, I'm recommending that we take off that whole thing about copying...
You saw it on the...
Yeah, zoning book and a SALDO.
Okay.
And...
Those things are available online, right, Gus?
Yeah.
So, people can access them anywhere.
Yeah. And then the next thing is that on the page three, that the section under recreation fees, that we remove this section because we don't charge a rec fee for a subdivision lot, and, uh, we stopped doing that, and the previous board did away with our rec board.
Rec board, yeah.
So, that's a thing of the past, and all the other fees for the permits, subdivisions, uh, land developments, uh, and applications for amendments to the zoning ordinance or zoning map and so on, and the sign ordinance, we're right in line with other townships of our size. So, make those changes, that covers everything that's on the fee schedule, they'll be posted in the township office.
Okay. And Pat, you have the changes, and between the office staff, we will have a new schedule for fees. I make a motion, we adopt the new sched, amended schedule for fees.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So, resolution for retention and disposition of records schedule.
Yes, sir. Pat, it brought to my attention, after the comments that Miss Gager raised previously, that the township doesn't have any, um, schedule for the retention and disposition of records. So, the state puts out a municipal records manual that governs how long you should keep things. Uh, so this resolution is basically adopting that man, manual that was initially approved December sixteenth of two thousand eight and was revised on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
You say that we didn't have one? We have one.
I thought you said we didn't.
I didn't say we didn't. Because we, we have actually already made, um, the resolution, you know, to destroy this many, six square feet of it. There is an old, there, there is an old one. We're done. Oh, right there, the, we sent that, right there. Okay. This, you sent me this. And I think that we have one.
You think you already adopted it by resolution?
Yep.
All right. Well, then, table that and the next resolution to make sure we don't adopt it again.
You don't need to go get COBOL?
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay. Well, if you, if your municipality functioning in the state of Pennsylvania, you're under that munis, museum, uh, authority, whatever, that governs for everyone.
Yeah, well, the manual recommends that you adopted by resolution.
Well, I think you did somewhere along the line because we've used it already.
Okay. Okay, we'll table that till next month?
And the next one too, because that's really, just to make sure.
And the recording policy, we'll table till next month.
Maybe I misinterpreted your notes, Pat? Because you, you were maybe just saying that there wasn't a recording policy.
There was a recording policy, and I thought that it was not as strong as it needed to be.
Okay. All right. We can...
I sent, did you guys figure that out?
Yeah. Okay.
Excuse me.
We'll move on to the fire prevention and fire protection ordinance, that is what we had talked about as a burn ban. And that is, I will make a motion that we pass the fire prevention and fire protection policy.
We didn't advertise it yet, we can't adopt it.
Okay.
We've motioned to advertise it.
Motion to advertise.
Mm-hmm.
As a, as an ordinance.
The reason that it's called fire prevention and fire protection is in your COBOL book now, there's a chapter seven entitled Fire Prevention and Fire Protection, so...
There's not a burn ban one?
So, you made a motion to accept?
I made the motion to, uh, advertise.
Oh, to advertise, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those no, motion carries. Uh, regis, approve the registrants and voting delegate to the PSAT convention. And, and Dodge symposium.
Yeah, the PSAT convention conference, it's conference, is April fourteenth to sixteenth, so we have a meeting before that. Um, if you register before March the twenty-something, you, it's a lesser price, and last year Chuck and Greg went, and I think that Dave said he was gonna go this year.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, he would logically be your voting delegate.
That's right.
You only get one voting delegate.
So, I, I think if it's cheaper, we can go ahead and do that now and...
Register all three.
And register all three.
Okay. And then the, the voting delegate, well, you three supervisors should review these resolutions, these proposed resolutions, and then at the April meeting, tell Dave, you know, yes, no.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And you'll see that we get copies of those?
Yes. You don't.
No, okay, all right. All right. Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, Chuck and Greg as registrants to the PSAT convention and Dave Boyer as our voting delegate.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. We want a new business, uh, we will take our donations page from last month and review those and make decisions on those in the April meeting. Uh, the traffic study, Gus said that JBI is initiating that. The traffic study, Gus said that JBI is initiating that.
Correct.
No, that, that's not this.
Oh, that's not the same one.
No, this right here, the state, that long paper, the state is doing, they do random, it tells you in here like every, how many they have to do per year and, you know, the random. And we have four right there. I think we talked about this before, you know, they do the five-year plan and the, this is now in the U.
Tracy Drive, Lake Camp Fickers.
So what do they do?
We put a counter out that you drive over.
Put a counter out.
On the road in Huntington, Four Places in Huntington, is what you're saying?
Says it's a guideline to help DOT improve roadway and traffic data inventory, which is used to make decisions on safety, design, and operation of roadways.
What's the fourth one, just says township?
So we just have to acknowledge this or we have to say, yes, they can do it, or?
No, we're just acknowledging it.
They're gonna do it.
They're gonna call you about it.
Yeah, the people are gonna see them out there counting and it's, once, it's between March of twenty twenty-four and November of twenty twenty-four, that they're gonna be on Tracy Drive, Lake Camp Road, Fickers School Road and Township.
Township line.
What do I jump lines?
Township line.
Oh, Township School.
Down here.
Township line, yeah, okay.
Not ninety, you mean Baltimore?
No, Township line, very good, that little one branches off good down here.
Oh, geez.
Both Quaker Church.
They'll get a lot of them.
Well, everybody.
Blue is the low-lying road.
Half of the people are good in school.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that actually was designated different places.
It is.
It is township line, that's.
And it's just from?
From Quaker Church to.
Yeah, Baltimore bike.
To Baltimore Red.
Yeah, I was thinking there's a lot of school traffic on that.
There is.
Trying to get ahead of somebody else.
Okay, uh, next is Huddersburg Fire Company's appreciation banquet. That is March thirtieth at four P M. And if you're interested, you need to RSVP by the twenty-second of March. And next is to inform the public that Agland Preservation Program Round Sixteen is March the twenty-fifth. If you're interested in applying for land preservation, the next round is opening. Uh, subdivision and land development, anything new there, Gus?
No, I've already mentioned that Eve is not here, 'cause that's still with the planning commission and we got two others that haven't even hit the books yet. Arlie's here, but I've got, uh, Lobah and there's another one that hasn't come in yet. Called me about it and, oh, they have Hershey's. Those haven't been coming yet.
All right, write to no requests, on February ninth, Marie de Gange asked for any and all invoices of, from Salzman Hughes. On February the ninth, Marie de Gange asked for the letter sent to Michelle Deverin of Waste Management from Sal, Salzman Hughes. On February fifteenth, Ma, Marie de Gange asked for all invoices and services rendered from Scott Longstrath from Sheriff Design. On February the twenty-sixth, Marie de Gange executed, wanted, and executed contact with York Springs Fire Company, Relief Fund Association of York Springs Fire Company of Adams County and Huntington Township. And February the twenty-sixth, Marie de Gange wanted an executed contract with Huddersburg Fire Company and Huntington Township. On March the sixth, Marie de Gange wanted a current executed intermunicipal agreement with Nurema. On March the sixth, John Clausen, Correspondence Application and Permits with Bon Ton Builders from January first, twenty twenty to the present. Or have they all been acted on?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, upcoming meetings, the planning commission will meet Monday the twenty-fifth at seven. The Nurema meeting will be Wednesday, April the third, six o'clock here in Huntington Township. Supervisors' regular business meeting will be Thursday, the eleventh. Any public comment?
I just wanna check, are the auditors still meeting in March? I think, is it twenty?
We have not gotten a, uh.
Okay.
Final, so I'm sure they're still meeting.
There was, well, I mean, they were supposed to have, I thought a final meet, their final meeting, March twenty-fifth, but maybe I'm wrong, okay.
These are almost have to be then because the reports do.
That's what I thought they announced at the previous meeting, well, the meeting and what was that?
Okay, uh, Todd, do we need executive sessions?
Yes.
Okay. For which one? Both, okay. Well, we need, we're gonna go to executive session to discuss dockets for twenty twenty-three SU two, O-two-eight-five Christopher and Heather Miller. And docket twenty twenty-three SU two O-eight-six Christopher and Heather Miller. And to discuss potential litigation with Waste Management. So we will go to executive session.
We have to make a motion.
I make a motion, we go to executive session.
I'll second that motion. Actually, uh, a couple of years ago, we had updated everything.
Hey Paul, can we get back to public comment, I missed out on something I wanted to ask?
Yeah. We will reconvene the meeting and public comment. Okay. Yep.
Yep.
What is, does explanation done mean? Do you have any done? I was told I was done today. And do I come to work tomorrow, am I fired, or who fires me, or I told I was done today?
Who?
The roadmaster told me I was done today. So somebody needs to tell me, well, I need to come to work tomorrow, I'm done.
Is the roadmaster here?
I think he went to the restroom.
Oh.
I hope he did, we're down that way.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring this up like this.
No, no.
I don't know what done means. Am I done today, am I done working?
Did this happen today?
Yes, I need to know if I'm done or.
We weren't privy to any of this. I, we don't know.
Now, you guys need some time to talk about it, me, Chuck, or whatever you wanna do, I, I don't got a problem with it, I just told I was done today.
Well, I think the way it goes, the roadmaster would have to recommend that each gentleman terminate you, so.
I told I was done.
Come on in tomorrow, 'cause they gotta make a decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, let me know when you make your decision, or, I, I just told I was done.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't mean to.
No, wait.
You didn't turn your shoveling yet, did you?
No.
Line side.
I, I didn't mean to.
No, no.
Stunt you guys, I, I'm sorry.
No.
All right, thanks, guys.
Any other public comment?
Say here.
Not, the meeting, I make motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries.